Second.
Second by Mrs. Kepiscus and Ms. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Here.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yeah.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next I'll make a motion to seal the closed session minutes of the October 13, 2021 meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus. Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
I'll report on a five to nothing vote. The committee approved the resolution brought by Local 1137. Draw, please. Join me in standing for a moment of silence and the pledge.
For the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll go into good and welfare. If there's anyone who would like to address the school committee, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. I don't see anyone. So we'll go into the approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the September 22, 2021 open meeting minutes. Is there a second? Second by Vice Chair Burke. Any corrections to the minutes? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus. Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Costa. I would like to pull out of the purchases, the last item, which is, it appears that it's for $167,000. That's payable to Waylon Karanti, Kinder, our attorneys, and I, Mr. Perry, correct me if I'm wrong, aren't we paying them monthly as we're going along?
Mr. Chairman, we currently have no agreement with Waylon Karanti and Kinder at this moment, so we are getting billed month to month.
And I'd like to make an adjustment, propose an adjustment to the purchases that it reflects not the 167, but a three-month total.
Currently, we have three bills outstanding, the two, the regular July and August bill, and also a labor bill for negotiations that happen in July. So the total of those three invoices is $27,386.79.
That's what I propose. Any discussion, committee members? Then I'll make a motion to amend the consent agenda to reflect the numbers that you mentioned. Mr. Perry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. Dr. McGee, roll call on the amendment.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus. Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Now, on the consent agenda as amended, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into communications. And I guess we have a presentation for the right-to-read presentation. Mr. DiRizzo.
Good evening. Would you all do me a lovely favor of joining us down in these seats so you can view the presentation? Good evening again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the school committee for giving me the opportunity to share with you some important legislation that has come our way and the magnificent impact it promises to have on the teaching of reading in One Socket schools. I'm going to start with giving you a little bit of a history of how One Socket came to address this legislation. About a year and a half ago, RIDE worked with us to develop a district literacy plan. And that plan involved using three major pieces of data collected to formulate specific areas of focus that the district would need to address. The data that was utilized came first from RIDE through the assessment state data collected over multiple years, self-reported data. We have received a major grant, comprehensive literacy grant, which focuses on supporting literacy in many areas across the district. One major component will be the right-to-read legislation that I will cover in just a moment. That served, that application and grant process involved a major survey of all educators within the district. And the last piece of data was collected by The Hill themselves. It was a roadmap survey that was completed twice during the 2020-21 school year. This data resulted in recommendations in these five areas: family engagement, leadership, support for instruction, assessments, professional learning for teachers. Now, when you go home and you have some time to do some reading, I've embedded the actual literacy plan that was pushed out to our educators at the start of the school year on the left side. And on the right side of the screen is the plan in family-friendly terms that was shared with all of our families in the district. And although I'd love to talk about all five components tonight, we are here to really focus on the bottom yellow component, professional learning for our teachers. Specifically, the Rhode Island Right to Read Act. This act was passed in July of 2019. It is a law that requires educators to exhibit either proficiency in or awareness of the knowledge and practices of the science of reading and structured literacy by the 2023-24 school year. So what is the science of reading? Well, the science of reading is the research. The research behind what educators now know moves students to become most proficient. So how is structured literacy embedded in the science of reading? That is the components of speaking, listening, reading, and writing that are systematically taught to address the components of reading in a fashion that makes the most sense for emergent readers through our high school graduates. The basis of this training is comprised of something called the Scarborough's Reading Rope. And basically, the concept is this visual. There are many, many pieces of the reading process. And when they are combined in a systematic fashion, readers become most able to become automatic in their reading. However, many years ago, reading took different turns. And what happened is that many of the reading companies and educators of teachers of educating students to become teachers left out the most important components in the strand, and those are the bottom strands. Phonological awareness, which is basically knowing that letters are comprised of sounds and in combination, those sounds bake words, which can then be decoded and read, and that words can then be read by sight. That lack of recognition and focus on those key elements meant that many educators were spending most of their time focusing on the upper end of the reading rope, which are the things like vocabulary and background knowledge and language and comprehension. However, what research has showed us, if students are not increasingly automatic in those bottom skills, the top are at risk. So the science of reading is taking the time to teach our educators not only about each of these components, but what strategies are needed to have, to give to students to ensure that they do become accurate skilled readers. So right-to-read legislation has those two components. The first I'm going to cover is the proficiency. All of these educators listed on the screen are required by the start of that 2023 school year to prove proficiency. Early childhood educators, all of our pre-K through fifth grade classroom educators, our district-wide reading specialists, district-wide special education educators, as well as our English speakers of other languages, and bilingual and dual-language educators. So One Socket has chosen two pathways to address proficiency. The first is the AIM Pathway. It's actually an interactive digital platform. It's designed to deliver the science of reading content combined with some community of practice sessions for teachers to collaborate and discuss the process. This is a very rigorous platform. I say that because I participated in it myself, along with many members of our leadership team. The pathway consists of 17 modules, each consisting of four to six hours of coursework, and at the end of the pathway, a very rigorous assessment to prove proficiency. I am very proud to say that last year, we had 104 of our educators participate in this pathway and complete it successfully. This year, we have an additional 117 educators completing this rigorous training. Mr. Chairman, you had asked me about what's, what was the percentage of educators perhaps that had done this. And I looked into that specifically, and I'm happy to say that at our elementary level, we are at about 80% of our teachers are already either in the process of achieving proficiency or already have received it. That is the highest percentage in the state. So we are very, very proud of that. In addition, we have faced a very major crisis with dyslexia in this country. And part of the legislation addressing right-to-read wants to acknowledge the fact that with early intervention, many students can not suffer with lifelong disabilities with reading. We have been very fortunate, as part of our comprehensive grant, to have 10 of our teachers enrolled in the URI Dyslexia Graduate Level Certification Program. And when this, when I say intensive, it makes pathways seem easy. And trust me, the pathways were not easy. But I will be thrilled to work very closely with Dawn Morel in addressing our students' needs in-house. Formerly, Dawn and I were often scrambling to meet student needs, to ensure that we were providing intervention that best meet our dyslexia population. It is our hope to soon have a dyslexia-certified teacher in every elementary school and in both middle schools. Awareness training. So the remainder of our educators in the district must receive awareness training. And the awareness training goes from people such as all of our building administrators, to people such as our math, high school educators, technology, theater, library, health, just about every other educator in the district must receive awareness training. I'm going to stop for just a second to let you know that although they must receive the awareness training and the other cohort receives proficiency, it is not attached to our state certification. It is attached to our job performance. So Mickey Dargan will have her hands filled in communicating this information to the state going forward. So WED has chosen two pathways for our awareness training. First of all, we offered for our teachers that are in need of this, an opportunity that RIDE has offered. It's a five-course series on the science of reading and structured literacy through a platform that's known as Bridge RI. When the teachers complete all five courses, they are able to exhibit a level of awareness, and they've completed their state requirements. These are independently paced modules that teachers interact with on their own. The last pathway that we have for awareness is for our administrators. And this is through the same company that developed the literacy plan for us. It's called The Hill, and that's divided into four modules, and they are two and a half hours, focusing again on those developing awareness, knowledge, and practices of the science of reading. The nice part about these modules is that teachers, principals will be given look-fours. They'll be given information to know what to look for when they go into a classroom to recognize the components of structured literacy. With all of those pieces in place, I thought there was one more slide, but apparently there are not, that compromises or composes all of the pieces for our plan to address structured literacy and meet the requirements of the state legislation. Do you have any questions? Oh, of course you do.
Beginning in 2023, 2024, when everything's supposed to be completed, is this going to be part now of future certification?
Oh, I love that question. That's a great question. So the requirements on the school districts are intended to be temporary. The bigger requirement is going to be of colleges and universities, that they then blend this work into undergraduate studies so that the onus will no longer be on the district to, A, subsidize and ensure efficacy to the proficiency or awareness.
Just one more question.
Sure.
On your first slide, you talked about the three places where the data came from, for the district literacy.
For the district's literacy plan, yes.
And The Hill gathered that roadmap survey.
Yes.
2020-21 school year, does that, yeah, does that skew with the results?
Well, to be honest with you, the information that they, the surveys themselves were not just about the school year. They were about literacy over time, longitudinally, how have we addressed literacy in One Socket? What types of programs and structures do we have in place? What type of training do we have for our teachers? What type of materials are available? It was more global than specific to the school year itself. Thank you.
I've got a question.
Okay.
How are you going to measure the results? I mean, you know where we've been. So now we're, we're applying and we're implementing this great program. When do you see and how do you see the district measuring the success of the program?
So to be honest with you, we hope to have the proof in the pudding. So once our, all of our educators are proficient and our administrators are aware of what to look for when they go in to see good teaching and learning, the impact should be in our data. So we should be able to not only see increases on our local data, which monitors our progress quite frequently throughout the year with three universal screening dates, but also in the impact of our RICAF scores.
Well, our teachers are going through this program right now, administrators. So are you looking at the next fiscal year in terms of being able to determine how well it's going, or is it going to be this year?
I will tell you from a subjective standpoint, Dr. McGee and I were in classrooms today, and in practice is already evident. Principals are even noticing the impact of instruction. It's something that I don't think is going to turn over by the end of this year. It's going to be something that takes time and attention to detail, and that's why it's really important that our administrators are trained as well. Because paying attention to the process is one thing, implementing is another. Ensuring that it stays implemented over time is most important.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Congratulations on getting this program up and running.
Thank you very much. I have to, I have to actually tip my hat to Dr. McGee. We are where we are with this process right now because he embraced it early on, and he believed that it was worth our time, energy, and effort. He enabled us to put together a literacy team and get moving well before any other district. So thank you and kudos to him.
Great job.
Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just wanted to thank Mrs. DiRizzo. I appreciate her kind words, but truly, I'm just the person that said, "Go." The directors that are sitting out before you are really the ones that have implemented this and have worked with the staff. So I am very fortunate to work with a team of directors and principals and administrators that have really put this at the forefront. And, you know, I'm just very proud of all the work that they've done. And our teachers, our teachers, as Mrs. DiRizzo said, it's, this is not something that you can complete in a weekend. This is many, many hours. And I just want to recognize our wonderful teachers who have completed the training and those teachers that are in the midst of the training, their hard work, I'm very appreciative of. Thank you.
Excellent job, everyone. This is really an important and interesting program. I'm looking forward to seeing the results of this program. Next, we're going to go into your report. Dr. McGee.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yes. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the right-to-read presentation. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Costa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Vice Chair Burke.
I read it right here, so I figured I'd bring it up.
I'm glad you did. You read it. The reading program.
I'm all set, yeah.
Miss the...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee. I have three agenda items this evening under my superintendent's report. First, I'll briefly talk about the personnel updates. So we have, since our last school committee meeting, we have hired five FTEs. Those range from reading specialists to occupational therapists, social worker, and inclusion teacher. So we continue to try to fill as many remaining positions here in the One Socket Education Department. We also have four non-certified positions that we filled, and just numerous hourly and stipend, hourly stipend and extracurricular positions across the district. So again, our administrators and our directors and teachers are working very hard to fill all of the positions that we have still remaining for the 21-22 school year. My second agenda item, I'd like to discuss with the committee a topic that has been discussed quite a bit over the last month and a half, and that is the impact of the Department of Health's vaccine mandate for healthcare providers across the state. So the committee may be aware that the governor in September issued an executive order which basically called for all healthcare providers, whether they be in a healthcare facility such as a hospital, a nursing home, et cetera, or school departments, which would include a nurse, a physical therapist, social worker, psychologist, occupational therapist, or a physical therapist. So I wanted just to let the committee know where we stand here in One Socket. So October 1st was the initial deadline that the governor had issued for folks who fell under this category to be vaccinated, or basically to be terminated. So there's, there's been a lot of information out there that has come from the governor's office, as well as the Department of Health, as well as RIDE. So right now, what I've done here in the, in the WED is, and this came from the governor, the governor gave organizations that employed these individuals, the month, basically of October, to put plans in place for either replacing these folks or putting plans in place so that, for example, schools would not be left without nurses, you know, in each building. Because you can't run a school without a nurse. You have to have a nurse. I mean, there are instances where nurses are absent, and we have nurses that are covering, but that's only for a short-term basis. To have a nurse out full-time would be impossible to run a school. It's not safe. So having said that, what I am deciding to do here in One Socket is November 1st, which is the new deadline, if you will, that the governor has put out, in here in One Socket, we have approximately three employees who fall within this category who are either not vaccinated or have requested a medical exemption, which is afforded to anyone that falls within this category. For example, if you received a first shot and you had an adverse reaction, that would qualify as a medical condition that would preclude you from receiving further vaccination. Also, anyone that may have contracted COVID, there's that certain period of time where you cannot receive another shot, or you can't receive a first shot, you have to wait a certain amount of time. So we have, we have some individuals that fall under, under that category. But what we're doing here is those folks who are choosing not to get vaccinated, whether it is a personal decision that they're making, or are seeking potentially a religious exemption, what I am doing is I am permitting them not to get vaccinated if it's a medical condition. We've had, I've had conversations, Mickey and I have had conversations with Sarah with respect to religious exemptions, which we're not granting at this time. But those who cannot get the vaccination would be tested weekly in the district. So they would be issued a COVID test every week. They would be required to wear the, either a procedure mask or a high-grade mask, like a KN95 or an N95. Now, the other piece to this is that what we've heard is that the Department of Health will, will pull licensure for any, any, any staff who refuses to get the vaccination that doesn't qualify for a medical exemption. I've heard a variety of things on that front. I've heard on one hand that the Department of Health will in fact do that. If the Department of Health does that, if they, if they in fact do pull the license of individuals that fall within this category who are not vaccinated by November 1st, then they will not be employed in the One Socket Education Department. And I would move to, to the school committee. If they refuse to be vaccinated and their license is pulled, they can't work. RIDE would not permit them to work in the school department if they don't have a Department of Health license. So that is the direction that I'm going in here as we move through the month of October and as we approach November 1st. So I'm going to stop there, and I'm going to see if you have any questions that I could answer.
Has been discussed with, with the administrators and teachers?
Can't hear you.
Oh. Son? Okay. Has this been discussed, Dr. McGee, with teachers, administrators, union personnel at this point?
I have had the conversation with the union. So the union is aware of what I was going to be discussing this evening.
Anyone else?
Dr. McGee, did I hear you clearly? There are only three individuals that are not vaccinated, and of these three, they're seeking a medical exemption. seeking a medical exemption or they just had COVID and they can't have...
So I believe, Mr. Burke, I misspoke, I believe there are four who are not vaccinated. And I believe of the four, I think two have a medical exemption. So there are just two, two others that fall within the category who this would, you know, they would fall under this, this process of needing to be vaccinated weekly.
I mean, just follow up.
I mean, I mean tested, yes, yes, tested weekly, exactly.
Follow up, Dr. McGee, and come November 1st, does their medical exemption still stand?
So depending on the medical exemption, if the medical exemption states that they've, they've received a shot and they had a, when I say an adverse reaction, I don't mean sort of the standard, you know, your arm is sore or, you know, you're not feeling well for a few days. But there, there are sort of some specific reactions that would, that would put someone at a risk, potential risk of receiving further, further shots. So they would fall under, under that category.
One final question, and that'll satisfy RIDE's concerns about pulling certification?
That's, that's correct. Yes, yes. It's going to be interesting because we've, because the Department of Health hasn't come out officially, they've been saying things, they've been saying that this is going to happen, but I don't know what they're going to do, I'll be honest with you. You know, I, as you know, I have monthly Zoom meets with my colleagues across the state and RIDE is frequently on those. And on some occasions, the Department of Health, they have representatives who are there as well. And there, there has not been a real answer that's been provided in terms of, on this date, this is what's going to happen with respect to their licenses being revoked. So it's somewhat of a waiting game, really, in terms of the Department of Health.
That decision hasn't been made yet by them in terms of pulling the licenses that it's been rumored?
Correct.
So no action has been taken yet?
That, I don't know if that action has not been taken in terms of school districts. I know that in speaking with, again, my colleagues, there are colleagues that are, that are following sort of, I don't want to say my lead, because I'm not necessarily leading them, but are looking to do the same thing that I'm looking to do here. You know, it's, it's very difficult. If you're looking at nurses especially, it's very difficult to find nurses now. We've had openings this year, we had some retired, nurses who retired last year, and it's been a challenge, to say the least, to fill those positions. So I don't want to put the district in a position where we don't have a nurse at a school. If that situation were to arise, then we would have to close the school because we can't have a sub-nurse from another building, you know, working in two, in two schools for more than maybe a day or so, which is what we do now, but it's, it isn't something that we can really sustain. So if there are no other questions, my third agenda item is just an update on the district attendance. So I just wanted to let the committee know that we are going to be providing RIDE with our, with our attend, with our enrollment data this week. It's due on Friday. So my hope is the, the next meeting or the first meeting in November, after we've provided RIDE with our enrollment data, our attendance data will be, will be more accurate. And I can specifically report out on the attendance by school and even potentially, you know, by, by level, you know, elementary, middle, and high school. You know, as I said last time, the, the data department, they're still in the process of, of, of just cleaning out the attendance data. As I said last time, when students are absent due to quarantine, there is a specific code that we've been putting in that we're still waiting to hear back from RIDE. We may need to go back and modify those codes. So, you know, the last time I spoke about the high school's attendance being 70%, that's not truly an accurate depiction because many students at the high school have quarantined over the last few months. So when we go back, once we get the notification from RIDE exactly how they would like us to code students who are quarantined, then those numbers will change and they'll go up. So I'm hopeful that by the, then the last meeting, the next meeting, or the first meeting in, in November, I'll have much more accurate attendance numbers.
Is there, is there, is there also, when you look at the attendance figures, are we current in knowing which, where the students are that have left the district? And in past years, we would, we would lose a student because we didn't know where in the world they went, and it counted against us. It's as if the student isn't attending, but in fact was gone. Are we up to speed on that? Are we still accumulating that data?
So that's something that we continuously work on. You know, that, that has been something that's affected our high school graduation rate for many, many years. And over the last, you know, seven or so years, specifically Mr. Boule at the high school has done a really, really good job of locating students and going back into the RIDE portal and providing information to RIDE that says, this student left us and went to this district. Because if a student leaves and it's not reported as to where they've landed, then they're a One Socket student. And if they don't graduate in four years, it's counted against us. So we have done a lot of work over the years, but it really is, it's an ongoing process. We've cleaned up a lot of that data so that there's less to have to clean up now than there was seven years ago. But it, but it really is an ongoing, it's a fluid process.
Hey Burke, you had something?
I should have waited, sorry. Besides the attendance, daily attendance figures, isn't the October, are the October numbers also enrollment?
Absolutely.
And that's something that goes to the state? It hasn't affected our funding and...
Absolutely. That's why the October date is a very important state, date, because that really sets the tone for the year and our, the funding. The March one is equally as important, but the October one is the first one of the year, and you want to make sure you're, you're as accurate as possible. But that's a good point, Mr. Burke, because for our attendance, our attendance to be accurate, the enrollment data has to be accurate. So if we have students that are, that are, that may be enroll but have been no-shows, we, we don't, we don't want to take attendance on those students because they're not here, because they're, they're no longer in our district. So if we're taking attendance on students who are no-shows, then that's going to hurt us and it's going to, it's going to decrease the attendance rate as well. So that is, that's a very critical point you bring up, is that we have to have that data correct so that our attendance, so that our average daily attendance data will be correct.
And that was my point in knowing which students are no longer in the district. Because maybe we should be taking attendance on a student who's here, just isn't attending. But if they're gone, if the family is gone, then I agree with Vice Chair Burke, we have to fix the enrollment. Anyone else for the superintendent? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Leclerc, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the school subcommittee reports. First one, I'll ask Mrs. Kapiskas to give us the CILAC update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The CILAC met on October 7th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. We met remotely as we continue to do. We had a very brief meeting, we had only one parent present, Ms. Costa was present in her capacity as parent, not a school committee member. Other than that, it was mainly staff members. I'm kind of disappointed with the attendance we've been seeing this school year. I think we can all agree, it's been disappointing because I wasn't at the September meeting, but Ms. Morell indicated to me that it was, parents were in short number. No one was asking questions, and this meeting was particularly short-numbered parents. We went over old business, our parent support group not currently meeting due to COVID, reviewed any changes to special education, reviewed the dog therapy program, which we're going to get to later in policy. We talked about the transition skills program at the high school, report back on the extended school year, and talked briefly about the new model for special education and in general education classrooms at Vernon and Coleman. There was no new business, there were no real comments from anyone, and I think we were done within about 20 minutes, which I'll be frank, I was grateful for because we had just come out of a two-hour policy meeting. So I think we're all kind of happy that it was a 20-minute CILAC meeting, but I do hope that our next meeting, which is scheduled for November 4th, we have more parents that are participating because they're what drive the meetings, they're what make, that's what we're there for, we're there to share information back and forth. And if parents aren't there, we can't do much sharing because the staff know what's going on, they don't really need to share, it's the parents that need to know what's going on, and that's who we're trying to get the information to. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Kapiskas. Any questions for her? Vice Chair Burke?
Mrs. Kapiskas, one of the great things about last year for the CILAC meetings was the great attendance. And that was one of the reasons why we thought, how great it is that this group can stay virtual. What do you think happened?
I really don't know. Ms. Morell, do you have any ideas? No?
Don't.
I don't either. I really don't know what's happened.
We had a lot of parents on there last year.
Speak into the mic, please.
Sorry, we had a lot of parents there last year. There was a very big presence there last year, so...
I think our smallest gathering last year was maybe 28 people, and the larger ones were close to 50, which is more than we ever got in person. So it was wonderful. And it's just really dropped off. I don't know if it's that a lot of the special ed parents are overwhelmed with kids back in school, maybe they're dissatisfied because their kids are back in school and they want to go back to virtual learning, but we can't know that if you don't reach out. But there really has not been a lot of parental involvement. I'm not really getting any responses when I send out my emails to tell people that meetings are coming, please, you know, plan ahead. I always send out a reminder a week in advance, try to send out the agenda the Monday before, that didn't happen because of policy this month. But I usually do send out an agenda in advance, and I really even had nothing to put for new business because basically we're still trying to get programs running that we were talking about last year, like the new programs at Vernon and Coleman. So there wasn't a whole lot of new business to bring up. Maybe that's why people just aren't interested, because it's a lot of old business, we can't really do presentations right now. It's very hard to get things organized. It's hard to do remote presentations, even though we've gotten more used to them, but it's still hard to get people to come in and do presentations for free, unless they're in the district. Usually they're willing to come in and talk to us for free, but as a general rule, those are not well-attended. They prefer presentations from outside sources, and those are expensive.
In terms of reaching out to your parents, do you think we need to advertise the CILAC meetings more through our websites, through Dr. McGee's letters?
I know...
Or asking the parents, why aren't you attending?
I know that a lot of, I know Dr. McGee has been very faithful about making robo-calls to tell parents that we have a CILAC meeting. I know that a lot of the, the elementary schools in particular, because it's usually where our parents come from, are putting it on their school newsletters. I think, I'm not sure whether or not it's on the WED social media, I really don't know at this point, I'd have to ask Mr. Notorianni or the superintendent. That's something maybe we could think to include, maybe ask the principals to put it on their social media as well to publicize it. We've always had better attendance from the elementary school, it tends to fade as kids get older, till they reach transition, then they're back again. But I, I don't know. The only thing I can say is, but as a general rule, when you don't have a lot of parents at CILAC, it means things are moving smoothly. That's really been historically, in the 13, now 14 years I've been running it, things are historically going well if you don't have a lot of parents. I agree, knock on wood. We hear from them when things aren't going well.
That's true.
So fingers crossed, that's what it means.
Maybe we'll look at, to see the websites and the school websites and see if we can, you know, advertise it a little bit more. Any more questions from Mrs. Kapiskas? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the CILAC update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Vice Chair Burke, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the policy update, and I'll leave it to you, Mrs. Kapiskas and Vice Chair Burke.
I will save the full discussion till we get to the actual policies, I think that just makes more sense. But at our meeting on, again, October 7th at 4:00 PM, we met in person to discuss the following policies, an animal policy, security camera and video surveillance policy, a transportation policy, social media and electronic communications policy, a bus idling policy, criminal background check policy, and an update to the policy handbook. I could explain a little bit about the update to the policy handbook because that is not actually an agenda item. That is essentially, Mr. Notorianni has expressed to us, as he did, I'm going to say probably a year and a half ago, when we first started having this discussion, when Joe Cooper was still here, about creating a policy handbook that was more organized as opposed to our policies, which are pretty haphazard. And there's a model out of Connecticut that was, decision was made way back then that we were going to follow as to how our policies were going to be organized. And the plan is to basically organize the policies as we have them right now in that particular format, and then change them as we're changing them. We're trying to go through that policy, we're trying not to do it piecemeal in a more organized manner. Haven't had a lot of progress in the last year and a half, but now we appear to be moving forward. So the plan is, to the extent that policies are changed, they'll be switched out and brought up to date. But as of right now, our policy is very scattershot, it's kind of all over the place. You've got to really know what you're looking for, and we kind of don't want it to be that way. So that's essentially the last item we discussed on our agenda. The meeting started at 4:01 and adjourned at 6:04.
Any questions for Vice Chair Burke or Mrs. Kapiskas? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the policy update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Leclerc and Ms. Costa, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into conferences and discussions, and I'll ask Mr. Notorianni to give us the facilities technology update.
Thank you, Chairman. So I'll just summarize the memo before you this evening. So the technology department's been working very diligently to work on quite a few different tasks here in the district. For the first 60 days of the start of the school year, or the first 60 days, a few days before school year started and into the current school year, we've received almost 2,000 work orders, which is the largest amount we've ever received here in my tenure in One Socket. And at this time, or at the time of writing the memo, we were down to 150. So first and foremost, I think some of our techs here this evening, and they've done an excellent job, and it should be noted, they're working very, very hard to support the students and the staff. Moving on from that, the technology department's currently working on the digital school reservation system, which is replacing the paper forms that we used to use if you want to reserve a building for usage. We're also continuing to work on social media pages, many of them are up, but there continue to be a few that we're working on with various school principals, and this complements the policies that Mrs. Kapiskas indicated, that were discussed, the policy subcommittee. We continue to work on the district and school websites and providing updates for the current school year. We're also continuing to work on the key fob system, it's been installed, and we're now moving from building to building to take key fob IDs and take pictures of staff and get them their lanyards and whatnot. And the last thing is, we're still continuing to distribute student Chromebooks, the new Chromebooks that the gracious of the committee approved a few months back. We're continuing to distribute those out to the classrooms. In terms of data, the data department, the technology department has been working on the October 1st snapshot report, the enrollment, student attendance, the teacher course, student section data, and, and our overall state reporting, because we have several reports that are due for signature on Friday. The facilities department has also been working very diligently, however, they, it should be noted, are working, I wouldn't say understaffed, but we have several vacancies in the department, compounded by the fact that when any of our custodian is out, we shift facility staff over to the custodial responsibilities in the buildings, because the buildings have to be cleaned. So with those two different issues occurring, I'm happy to report that the facilities department's received about 300 or over 300 work orders in the last 60 days, and they've got about half of them done. So our response time is much slower, but with good reason, because many times, there's only a couple of people in the facilities department for 12 buildings. They also are working on several projects here, which is the school playground repairs, the master key project District Y, where we're going to have a master key for every building. They're installing medication lock boxes that are digital versus the old key system, which keys break, and they're still working on installing the OTPT swings for the students. for the students throughout the district. In terms of transportation, as I'm sure you're aware, and like most other districts and statewide, transportation through RIDE, Durham School Services has been experiencing issues. Um, you may have seen some communications going out. Uh, we're hopeful that Durham will be having some additional drivers starting in the coming weeks. They've had them in training, and we're hopeful that next week we're going to have a full complement of drivers. Um, and then lastly, um, the school resource officers, the school officer program, in addition to what they normally do in our buildings, working with our students and administration and staff, um, have undertaken a review of the traffic patterns in all of our school locations. Um, they most recently worked on the high school location, have made some suggestions and improvements. Coincidentally, Officer Johnson's here with us this evening, and he spearheaded the efforts at the high school, and he deserves a lot of praise. Um, they, they've corrected many of the deficiencies, and the busing, uh, has, has, has experienced an improvement in terms of drop-off and pickup times directly as a result of Mr. Johnson's suggestions. Um, so I think it's worth noting. And we're then going to move on to studying the middle school complex and both the citizens, which are two of our other major concerns here with traffic, and that will continue on to all school locations because there are certainly some issues at Harris, Coleman, um, Globe seems to be in good condition, Vernon Heights, um, has some concerns. So we'll be visiting all of the school locations with the SROs to see what we can do to improve traffic flow, um, for both parents and in the buses. That concludes my report for this evening. If there's any questions.
Any questions for our director? Vice Chair Burke?
Um, the distribution of student, student Chromebooks, um, what's the percentage? It's ongoing, but are we, are we getting to the point where most students now have a Chromebook?
All students have a Chromebook.
I'll have them.
All students have a Chromebook. The distribution that I'm referring to, Vice Chairman, is the new Chromebooks that the district, um, approved for purchase back in, I believe it was May or June. Those came in over the summer. We configured them. We prioritized the ninth grade and the 12th grade at the high school level. We prioritize six, so let me start, grades K, six, seven, eight, nine, and 12 all have the new Chromebooks. And, um, now we're moving on to the other grade levels. We're, we're making it, uh, it's a very deliberate process, making sure that we exchange and assign them to the particular students so that, for tracking purposes, because you may recall, we, we do lose track of a few things with, with COVID and stuff, so we're trying to make sure our inventory is accurate as we're distributing things.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Doc, Vice Chair Burke. I'll make a motion, receive and place on, on file the Facilities Technology Update. Do we have a second? Second, Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And now we begin new business, and we have several policies to be discussed. Um, first, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the amendments to the criminal background check, BCI policy for first passage. Do we have a second? Second, Mrs. Costa. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Kepiscus and Vice Chair Burke.
I'm going to start, Mr. Burke. The new criminal background check policy is actually an amendment of our current policy. It's intended to cover every new WED hire, uh, as each new hire must, within 12 months of hire, pass a national and state background check. So WED is advised as to whether or not the proposed hire has criminal convictions which prohibit their hiring, disqualifying conditions. Uh, policy is also intended to cover every One Socket Education Department volunteer, and that each volunteer must pass a state criminal background check annually. So WED is advised as to whether or not the proposed volunteer has criminal convictions which prohibit their access to our students. There were certain criminal convictions that prohibit, um, hiring, uh, with regard to employees. They're typically crimes of violence, murder, attempted murder, kidnapping, things like that. But most importantly, to our population, first-degree child molestation, second-degree child molestation, and child pornography. There were similar prohibitions against volunteering, against those who would seek to volunteer, the same crimes of violence, first-degree child molestation, and second-degree, degree child molestation, but surprisingly, not child pornography. That is set by state law. It is not set by our policy. We discussed with our attorneys whether or not we wanted to add child pornography to our policy, but unfortunately, there's really no purpose to doing so because when we send them out for a criminal background check, um, as a volunteer, they go to the local police, their local police, and the police will only report back on disqualifying conditions under the state statute, crimes of violence, first and second degree sexual molestation. They won't report back on child pornography, even if it's in our policy. So essentially, we all need to reach out to our state representatives, if you live here in Rhode Island, to make them amend the policy so that the volunteer policy also includes child pornography, as it should. Um, the exact wording of the policy is the exact wording of the state statutes. Um, as a result of, of that discussion, there was also a little bit of a further discussion about, um, some difficulty in getting reports back from the AG, getting reports back from local police, on some sluggishness in getting those responses. Not much we can do about it, unfortunately, but very frustrating for Human Resources. Um, after our discussion, a decision was made to send the policy on to the School Committee for first passage.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. Any comments on the, on the amendments to the policy? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourgey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the amendments to the bus transportation policy for first passage. Is there a second? Second, Mrs. Costa. Again, I'll turn it over to you, Mrs. Kepiscus and Vice Chair Burke.
Okay, with regard to the transportation policy, we currently have a policy, but it needed review and updating, and as something Mr. Notorianni and I have been discussing for a matter of time, uh, this policy sets out who qualifies for busing and addresses ongoing waiver issues. We may need to revisit this policy again. I'll explain that later, but it's important to have something in place now as issues arise at the beginning of the school year as to, and this improves on what we currently have in place. The policy is meant to address the requirements set out by current statutes and regulations to make sure our standards are consistent, particularly with regard to the issue of exemptions and waivers for busing. For example, medical needs, which require a waiver that a student would be outside, within the, the distance, not far enough away from the school to otherwise qualify, they have a medical need. There's also an ongoing discussion going on right now, um, per Chief Operating Officer and our council, about adopting a code of conduct with regard to the buses. Busing issues continue to be explored in both facilities and the budget subcommittees, and it's the intent to make this policy more comprehensive once those subcommittees make the decisions. However, for now, we want it to have the best policy we could have while we wait that out. In particular, we want to discuss the issue of appeals from the denials of waivers. When a parent applies for a waiver to qualify for busing, the decision is initially made by the Chief Operating Officer, and we wanted to set out, clarify, um, and set out what the appeal process is. The appeal is directly to the superintendent, and if you wish to appeal the superintendent's decision, it does not come to the School Committee to make it consistent with many of our other policies, but rather that appeal would be directly to RIDE. The new policy also clarifies how the distance from school is determined. It's a question that a lot of us had, is it, as I refer to it, as the crow flies, a big circle around your house or a big circle around the school, or is it something else? And our Chief Operating Officer explained to us that we use Durham's map program called Bertha Trans, which is the same program they use to set the bus routes, and that's applied in the same manner to each student for consistency purposes, and that's how distance from school is determined. There was a discussion of whether or not the matter should be sent out to the full School Committee, and it was decided that it would go to the full School Committee for first passage with the understanding that it will likely be reviewed again once the other subcommittees, basically Facilities and Budget, advise as to their positions with regard to busing issues.
I'll ask Mr. Notorianni, what busing issues? Since we're, we're looking at distancing, we're looking at a map that Durham uses, we have the issue of waivers, so what else, what else, what else the, the, the committee has to consider?
I think it, uh, might be appropriate for the committee to just explore our mileage requirements. Where we're at, often, many of the waivers, um, indicate that the parents feel that, um, the mileage is too far for their child to walk to school. So I, I think in, in terms of some of the information that we glean from the waivers indicates that it might be something that could be explored. I think there might be some opportunity to explore, um, based on attendance issues, um, that we're seeing trends with attendance many times, in addition to, um, reasons such as it's too far to walk, um, we find that, you know, families, some will indicate to the principal that their child may not be able to attend school, particularly during the, the winter weather. So I think these are some issues that probably should be brought forward, at least discussed and, and reviewed. I know recently Cumberland has conducted such a review. I'm not aware of, in the time that I've been here, whether I'm in my present role, or even when I was just responsible for technology, I'm not aware of, of a review that may have, may or not have occurred. I think we also might want to look at, at how many buses we presently, um, deploy out to complete our runs in, in terms of making sure that, you know, COVID aside, that we're, we're maximizing our, our potential, and we're making sure that our students get to school on time, um, which is not only a responsibility of the bus company, but us as well. So those are some of the types of issues that I think that, um, would need to be discussed, and Mrs. Kepiscus alluded, would be at both the Facility Subcommittee, which oversees Facilities and Transportation, but also, I think, uh, and under the Finance Subcommittee, um, for potential any cost that could be, you know, incurred, or savings, depending upon how we look at the routes that we're currently using. So those would be the items.
I would assume that this, these items are going to be on the next agenda for, uh, the Facilities Committee?
Um, they will be on the next, they will be on the next agenda, which will be Monday.
Finance Committee as well?
Um, yes.
It seems to me we shouldn't be dealing with a circle. We were talking about a circle, a radius. It's almost like an amoeba. We have different areas or pockets of students where they live, and there you get the biggest bang for the bucks to make sure we pick up as many students as we can. And that's where you would deploy any additional assets that we need.
Precisely. Yes. Yep, that's some, that's precisely some of the things that we could explore is, is, you know, it, do we, do we shift from the circular shape to something that, I guess, none, I don't know. It's almost like globes on a map, if you will, like, you know, versus, just as a, yes, exactly. That's something that we should probably explore.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bourgey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve amendments to the social media policy for first passage. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Leclerc. I'll turn it over again to you, Mrs. Kepiscus. Please. Vice Chair Burke, I didn't mention you because I know you're going to, she's going to handle it.
He's just going to point to me.
Yes, he is. I know she does.
Thank you. In addition to the criminal background, uh, check policy, uh, social media was probably one of the policies that generated the most discussion. Uh, we do have a current policy for social media, but it's five years old and it reflects its age. It refers to such things as WhatsApp. I mean, um, MySpace and things like that, as opposed to the current things, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Snapchat, and there's probably others I don't know about. It had some parameters, but not enough. We need to make it better, clearer, and stronger. The new policy is meant to clarify the roles and responsibilities with mechanisms to control social media in the future. The district has made a decision that it will only use Facebook and Twitter for official social media, um, venues. These are the only approved forms of social media in the district. The One Socket Education Department has or will set up its own public social media accounts which permit comments, which generally receive no substantive responses other than thank you for your comment, and that is intentional. The One Socket School Department is also setting up or has set up public social media accounts for each school, which do not permit comments. These accounts are under the control of each school's principal, who is charged with controlling the content. The One Socket Education Department is linked to each one of these school accounts and retains access to these accounts in the form of an administrator, essentially. The schools' uh, public social media accounts are to be used essentially as bulletin boards of sorts to share information. This is for building level only. We have other means of communication through classroom level, dojo, et cetera. Classroom public social media accounts are not permitted under this policy. The, the WED acknowledges that it has no actual control over other social media accounts, which may be set up by individuals who are not subject to this policy, employees or staff. Um, employees who do so may be subject to discipline. Um, the One Socket Education Department policy does not apply to PTOs or PTAs, but does apply to more quasi-official parent groups like the C-LAC or perhaps the TESLO. If I can go back to that, that prior statement, um, there are social media accounts that we are all aware of, that have been set up, that appear to come from the One Socket School Department. It appears to reference One Socket Schools. Those are not necessarily acknowledged or created by the One Socket School Department, but we have no way to control them. The way you can tell if you're on the official one is there's no comments. It's essentially a bulletin board. If there are comments, it's on an official school, um, social media account. Um, and those are the accounts that appear to be creating a lot of the controversy with parents, that we have no control over them, and there was no way for us to control them. I just want to make that clear. The Human Resources Director raised some issues regarding employees and staff who, while being informed of student privacy and FERPA, use their own social media to improperly disclose identifying information about students via social media other than Facebook and Twitter, such as Instagram, Snapchat, text, et cetera. All of these fall within the term electronic communications, and there's an intent to develop some examples as to what would be inappropriate communications using other forms of social media, public or private, that would be disseminated to staff, to clarify what is and is not appropriate conduct with regard to social media under this policy. After much discussion, it was decided to send this policy as drafted on to the full School Committee for first passage.
Anyone have any thoughts? Any comments on this? I would imagine that if and when this policy gets, uh, second passage, that we will, uh, announce through the district what the official, uh, you know, professional, uh, social media that, that the district uses, and anything else is unofficial, that is not sponsored by WED. I'd like to make that very clear so that parents at least will have an opportunity to identify, oh, yeah, this is not, this is personal, it's not, it's not the school district that's, or any of the schools, uh, that have some social media, a social media outlet that's not approved. Anyone? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourgey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the video surveillance policy for first passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Costa. Mrs. Kepiscus, please.
We've had cameras in our middle school since they opened with no policy. We have now added more cameras in basically all of our schools across the district, and therefore we need to put a policy in place to address privacy issues, who can place the cameras in the buildings, and additional requirement of signage to advise students, employees, and the public of the existence of these cameras in order to comply with state law. It's important to note that the recordings are not available to just anyone who asks to see them, but they can be used for discipline of students and/or staff. Police cannot access the recordings made by these cameras if a student is in the video without a subpoena under FERPA, but can be released to the police if no student is depicted. For example, one of the principals raised, um, what if a robbery suspect parked their vehicle in our parking lot and ran in front of our school and our cameras caught them? Can we share that image? And council advisor, you can absolutely share that image because there's no FERPA privacy rights that are impacted because there are no students in the video. Our handbooks and our website will be used to further advise students and staff that there are cameras in our buildings, but not where they are actually located, as this is not required. We are not required to divulge where they are located, but per the policy itself, locations are restricted to where there is no expectation of privacy. For example, you're not going to find them in restrooms or changing rooms. HR asked if the recording is reviewed as part of an employee investigation and something else is seen, can you act on that? And council advised the recording could be used for that purpose. Council also confirmed that the policy provides sufficient notice to staff of the existence of the cameras. I asked about a longstanding issue for special education parents who want cameras in the classroom. I've been hearing about that at C-LAC for a decade. Um, council advised that such a placement would have to be approved by the union, and she expects that it would have some pushback. Also, um, we wanted to clarify that any parents who were thinking that that's what's going on, this is not real-time watching of these videos. No one is going to be sitting there watching each camera in each school. It's basically a recording. There is no one that's going to be watching it to intervene, which is what parents are looking for in those special ed classrooms. So it's not going to provide them what they're looking for anyway. Um, after full discussion, the decision was made to send this policy on to the full School Committee for first passage.
Any comments? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bourgey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the bus idling policy for first passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Mrs. Kepiscus.
I have a copious report on this. This policy is required to be in place in order to apply for capital fund money from the state. In short, we need to have a policy. It's meant to address issues around pollution and unhealthy conditions created by buses idling in a location where students may be waiting to board. After discussion, it was decided to send it on to the school committee for first passage.
I guess the buses will have to shut down, right, Mr. Notariani? Is that what you're telling us? Even in the cold, right? They're gonna have to do that? Okay. Right. Any discussion? Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the animal policy for first passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Mrs. Kepiscus, please.
I apologize for the length of this, but last policy to come out of our most recent policy Subcommittee meeting is the animal policy. This policy is intended to deal with the presence of animals on school property and in school buildings. It arises out of our very loved therapy dog, Flapjack, who visits the high school. It addresses the issues of any animals, domestic or otherwise, which may be brought on to our school property. Decisions on whether or not animals are placed within buildings, placed there, are within the control of the building principals or other department administrators, subject to the completion of a questionnaire or checklist which has been prepared by attorneys and must be sent to make face for review by the superintendent's office. This policy, again, is required by the trust, which provides our liability insurance coverage. This will cover, though, not only therapy dogs like Flapjack, but canine visits arranged by our SROs, as well as service dogs required by students and/or employees, both of which are first to be discussed, though, with special education and human resources respectively, before approval or denial of a request by a building principal. After discussion, it was decided to send this policy along to the full school committee for first passage.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. One question for everyone. Do we have show and tells where a zookeeper comes in with snakes and all kinds of birds? Do we have that that occur? And this policy, again, governs how we would handle those animals?
I believe it would. Any animal that comes on to the property, either in the building, whatever the case may be.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee?
Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Burke for a report results on the WHS WMS vaccine clinics.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I put this item on the agenda. I do not have the results of the report, and I am going to pass it on to Dr. McGee. He promised that he would provide the results.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So on the 25th, on September 25th, at Windsocket, which was a weekend, which was, I believe, a Saturday, at Windsocket Middle School, we, in in collaboration with the Department of Health, as well as Thundermist, provided a vaccine clinic. And it wasn't just limited to our our middle school students and their families. It was really across the district. But we we had 22 vaccines, which were provided at that particular event. And then on the 29th of September at Windsocket High School, from, I believe, it was eight to 11, this was specific to Windsocket High School students, we had five vaccines that were administered during that time. We also are going to have an event scheduled for October 30th, which is a Saturday. It's going to be here at the middle school on on the campus. It's going to be in collaboration with the WED, the Governor's Office, as well as the Department of Health and Thundermist is going to provide some support as well. And we're going to be offering COVID vaccinations to the community. There are flyers that are being created for that event, which will be distributed to the community. I will send out that information. I'll send it along to the principals, who will send it out. It'll be placed on our our websites, as well as our social media outlets as well. I know that Thundermist is also going to be supporting us in getting the word out to the community as well. So I'm hopeful that that this event will draw more students and family members and community members. There there will be, I I don't know that the governor is necessarily going to be here or the commissioner, but I do know that representatives from the Governor's Office and the Commissioner's Office will be here as well. So, you know, I I hope that we will, we will get a good turnout from the community.
Chairman, comments? Well, the numbers from the middle school seem very hopeful. I personally am disappointed to hear about the high school numbers, that there are only five. Now, there could be a lot of reasons for that. Maybe some of these kids have have received the vaccine on their own, which they can at a CVS, but there are only five high school kids receiving it. And and what what bothers me even more is that, and I think this is related, is that, as as we know, our football team has had to cancel two games because of COVID. So now, they could all be vaccinated, who knows? It's still being caused, but but somehow, we still, we have to find a way to educate. I mean, we're in the business of education in in our school district, and and obviously, we have to find a way to educate more students, provide them with the with the right reasons and and discuss all their concerns, because a football team should not be canceling games. I don't know, I don't know the exact reasons for that, but obviously, I would bet not too many football players have the vaccine. And I'm I'm not being political, okay? I'm just dealing with with finding a way to educate our students so we can ensure the safety of all our students. And that's all I'm all, that's what I'm all about. Those are my comments. Thank you, Dr. McGee, for... And I hope now this 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 upcoming event, you know, may may help things and turn things around, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
I know that in the conversations that I've had with the representative from the Governor's Office, there will be gift cards that will be raffled off. There might even be electronic devices, iPads, things like that, that will be, you know, raffled off as well, in hopes that that might, you know, entice more people to to attend and get vaccinated. So hopefully, hopefully, it'll work.
Dr. McGee, do we have any idea of how many eligible high school students are vaccinated or not vaccinated at this point?
You don't.
That's an unknown.
Yeah, that's an unknown. Yeah.
Do we have, isn't there, it seems to me, I've been reading, whether it's the state or neighboring states or even the country, it looks like it's going towards a mandate for students that are in sports, that there may be a mandate to have them vaccinated. I don't know what kind of thing. That's gonna have a certain impact. It's not here yet, but when it's... And then, when you look at the contact tracing, you have one or two students that are out because they have the disease, and they've, of course, they've been with the team. So now, you're done for that week. And that's what happened in this this last game. And it was just a couple of kids that had, that came down with it, were positive, but, you know, it was, they had met with the team, so they all had to be quarantined. So it doesn't take many, especially with contact tracing, right?
It doesn't, you know? Considered a close contact, you have to quarantine. So that's what we've, you know, been presented with here at the high school. And and it's not limited to Windsocket High School. I had a conversation with Principal Giu and Athletic Director Giordano this yesterday, and we talked about, you know, what what's happening. And, you know, I was curious as to what's happening with other high schools and other athletic teams across the state. And, you know, Ms. Giordano had indicated to me that there there are other, there have been other high schools that where where teams have had to quarantine and games have been, had to be either rescheduled or just canceled altogether based on the the scheduling impact for the, you know, for the remainder of the season. So it is, it's very frustrating, because, you know, while the number of infected students and student athletes is relatively low, it's the close contacts that shut it down.
Any other comments for Dr. McGee or Vice Chair Burke? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the the vaccine clinic update. Is there a, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Sigmar and five are saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll make a motion for, to discuss and approve school committee receiving all bullying reports. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Costa? Mrs. Costa, lead the discussion, please.
Okay, so I know I've I've had this before the board before, a couple times. And basically, what was done was, we moved the policy to the front page in result. If you look at it, effective June 30th, 2012, was the last time that this bullying policy was obviously, like, looked at or written. So we're going off something from 2012. We are now in 2021. So there's a couple things inside of the policy that I would like to kind of change a little bit for the policy oversight and responsibility. Number three on the, on the policy, where it says, "The school principal, director, or head of school shall provide the superintendent, school committee, and/or school governing board with a summary report of incidents, responses, and any other bullying-related issues at least twice annually." I'd like that to become like every school committee, so I can, we can see the reports and whether they're going down, if we're having more reports of bullying, and what we're doing to fix the situation. Because I feel like twice annually is not enough to take care of the situations that happen throughout the year. So I would like to try to amend that. Also, it says the number four for information of, what is that word?
Indemnation.
Thank you. It's supposed to be distributed annually to students, staff, volunteers, parents, and legal guardians. I think it should be distributed every quarter instead of annually. So it's a frequent reminder, maybe going home with report cards or something, that it can be just known and well, like, we're, we're making awareness of bullying in the school systems. Responsibility to the staff, I would like to do follow-ups on all incidents to see if the situation has resolved or further action needs to be taken. I know that we do do follow-ups on the bullying, because it is on the bullying page. I just wanted to become more aware of a follow-up, like, a more extensive follow-up, if that's possible.
What do you mean by that? More extensive?
Like, just to, just to make sure that there's no, nothing else is going on, that it did fully resolve. Speaking as a parent, I had an issue just recently with Leo Savoy, and my nephew wanted to fight his bully because his bully was spitting in his face, and it got brought up to the teachers, and then the teacher brought it up to the principal, and we had to revisit that quite a few times because the kid is still asking my nephew if he wants to fight him. So obviously, there's still more steps that need to be taken. And Ms. Claudio is in the process of handling that right now. So I just think that if we look at it at a little bit more extensive, because Ms. Claudio has actually gone in and physically witnessed it herself, so it's just something that I would like to have done a little bit more frequently. And I think that we should definitely be bringing more awareness to classrooms for teachers and students, meaning maybe having discussions in schools, maybe during, like, a free period or something like that, where we can have a discussion like that in classrooms, where we're bringing it. So, you know, a student witnesses another student getting bullied, and that student that's being bullied doesn't want to speak up, maybe another student will have the courage to be able to speak up and make more awareness, like I said, for teachers and for students. And the last thing that I would like to discuss and make a motion for, actually, is to form a bullying Subcommittee, so children, parents have a safe place to bring problems and form solutions. And I would like to try to put together a Subcommittee for Bullying specifically. And that's what I have for the bullying policy.
Comments, thoughts? Dr. McGee?
Mr. Chairman, so, Mrs. Costa, so with respect to the, you have some very good ideas, and thank you for for looking through the policy and trying to come up with some some real constructive, thoughtful ideas to try to decrease the level of bullying that that's happening across the district. So first, I want to thank you for that. So the the bullying policy that we have is, we use the statewide bullying policy. So what we, so in terms of the the modifications that you're that you're looking to make, what we would need to do is, we need to create our own district-wide bullying policy, because we can't change what the state has already established, which is what we...
Go on off.
Exactly. So what we would need to do, and and I think that, you know, one step in that in that process, so so this is going to involve the policy Subcommittee as as well. So but I but I think your your idea, your recommendation of a of a Subcommittee, of a group of of parents, students, and and WED staff, I think, looking at the state policy and then taking those recommendations to create our own, I think, is the first, would be the start of the process.
One of the things I see on 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 our agenda, it says, "Receiving all bullying reports." Approve the school committee receiving all bullying reports. Is that something we can do, Sarah? If you would speak into the mic, Sarah. I can't, you can't hear with your mask and everything.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. McGee?
So, so absolutely, and and we actually, Ms. Rappore and and a group of us, a few years ago, actually went over this, this part of the regulation that that RIDE expects districts to to adhere to, and that's twice a year. So the way it works here in Windsocket is, I ask each principal in January to provide me with a copy of each and every bullying report that was completed either by a student or a parent. And and then, in June, I ask them to submit to me from January to June. So I, so I do receive them twice a year, and the numbers of the number of bullying reports that we receive is reported, are reported to RIDE. But but you're right, we we absolutely could could tighten that up.
Well, I also, I I agree with Mrs. Costa that we should be getting these much more often, because we're only getting them twice a year. There's a lot that happens within a first term. Exactly. So...
Especially with COVID, coming back from COVID, you know, it's not easy. Some of these kids, you know, before they were experiencing, you know, bullying because of the clothes they were wearing, now it's because they can't afford to have a clean mask on their face. So I just feel like there's more reasons now in 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 the cyberbullying and everything like that as well. I just think it is becoming more frequent than it has, and it should be made more aware.
Chairman? Chair Burke?
Just to follow up on that, I guess my concern is, how are we to receive these reports? Do we receive them at an open school committee meeting, which I don't think we should be able to do because it deals with with students? Or do we have to have an executive session every time to receive one of these reports? Sarah?
Yeah, because the reason why I would like for it to be more aware is because, you know, some people grow up and that never leaves them, you know, that brings down their self-confidence. And sometimes, potentially, it leads into suicide. And it's unfortunate, and it's sad to see. But I would like to try to stop all of that before it gets to even that point where a child can feel bad about themselves or have to go home. Because I know I'm not the only parent that's getting asked that question. And their kid's coming home and saying, "Can I fight so I can defend myself?" I do not agree with that at all. I don't think it's okay. And it should never be a conversation that a parent has to have with their child. Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Capiscus?
May I ask one follow-up question with regard to the reporting back of data and identifiable markings? If the numbers reported in the aggregate, would it be a problem if there's a differentiation in the report as to special ed students in terms of bullying? Is that enough of an identifier? That's kind of exactly what I was thinking of, that, you know, perhaps this report should look something like that without specific factual instances, like student A with student B. Maybe the report back should be something along the lines of what we do with discipline, that there were following number of students disciplined in this particular grade level, and what percentage were of color, what percentage were non-English speakers, special ed, that sort of thing. That's kind of what I was thinking. So, basically, a percentage of the whole, which shouldn't be an identifier.
When I look at the agenda items eight and nine, and in response to your comments, Mrs. Costa, what I'd like to see is that this motion gets denied in that we, as a school committee, instruct the policy committee to amend the bullying policy to reflect all the comments and concerns that you have. And one of those comments in the, one of the items in the bullying policy is the formation of a bullying committee. Include it all in an umbrella committee, in the policy committee, but within this policy, that all the items that you've addressed, plus the formation of a bullying committee, and the frequency of reports, and all the good things that you talked about being included in that. So, instead of approving, just receiving the bullying reports and leaving it at that, and then just a discussion on the bullying policy, why don't we deny or discard this motion and vote it down, and then we will instruct, you know, the policy committee to focus on the bullying issues, to make it, put it on the front burner for their next meeting. How does that sound?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
My suggestion would be, as to item number eight, which is discussion and approval, I think we could probably vote on that. But nine is just discussion, so there's nothing to vote on. But with regard to eight, discussion approval on the school committee receiving bullying reports, maybe we need to have a discussion about what that's going to look like. And I'm thinking probably something along the disciplinary reports would make sense if anybody's ever seen what those look like. But I'll be honest with you, I've been on the school committee, I'm 18 months? No. Two and a half years. Yeah, it seems longer.
Feels like eighteen?
Seems like a decade, but two and a half years. I don't remember ever receiving a bullying report, no matter what this policy says. So, I think that we could certainly pass number eight, basically saying, "We have to comply with our own policy" and at least get a semi-annual report.
What I was thinking about is since one of the questions is that we don't know what these reports are. If we sent the whole thing to the policy committee, guess what?
Dr. McGee has all the reports. He gets all the reports.
What I'm saying is, then you'd have, how are we going to receive and would be included in the policy for this? So, if you're suggesting we approve receiving the reports, and then the policy committee takes up bullying and looks at this approval,
decides what the reports are going to look like.
But we could have a closed session to receive the reports, like maybe every other school committee meeting, we could do a closed session to receive the reports on top of whatever else we may have for closed session.
A closed session, you want to begin at four o'clock?
Five thirty, like we did today.
Saying, if we have other items, if we have a policy committee that takes care of the bullying policy and amends it the way everyone wants it amended, and then you have a bullying committee that looks at, looks at that, and then we get something in a summary form, I don't think I need to have all the details, blow by blow, to analyze what's going on. But the bullying committee would look at all that.
Yeah, see, I don't know. I would personally like to see it, so that's why.
You say you ask in January and June. We have none of that information currently, currently.
So, I could tomorrow say to the principals, if you have any bullying, reported bullying forms that have been completed, give them. The way I do it, because the statute says twice a year. So, the way I've decided to break it up is first half of the year and then second half of the year. But I could, I could ask for them whenever.
I think Amy wants something now.
Oh.
Could you either do that now, ask now, or take your past information? Take that, aggregate it into such a way that we wouldn't give out any information and just hand it to us at a meeting unless you want to have a closed session? Does that at least give her some numbers to work?
I just want to be able to see the reports, like myself, because I want to see what's being done about it.
Individual reports? Well, that's a little different then. We can't do that.
I know, she wants the individual.
No, that would have to be something done on the bullying committee.
Hold on. Sarah?
Right. Okay. Okay. Okay, but to get an overall report of... Okay. Yeah, see, I don't need like that exact, I just want to know at schools, okay, there was 10 bullying reports in this month, and now in this month, there's only six. And the ones that were in the past month, they've been resolved or they're resolved? Yes, yes.
That could be handled in a regular meeting, agenda item. Get facilities report, we can have bullying report.
No, November 17th, that's all, would that give you enough time to get some of that information? Or you want a little further? Is that good?
Yeah, that works for me.
We need a motion on that?
Well, let's first approve, let's go through the, we have a motion on the floor to receive all bullying reports. So, Dr. McGee?
Jorge?
Yes.
Mr. Chair Burke?
Personally, I still find it rather vague what a bullying, what this bullying report will look like. So, I'm going to vote no.
Ms. Capiscus?
I'm cautious as well by the description of bullying reports because, again, I want to make sure it's clear to everyone, it's a summary report. It's aggregate figures, it's not each individual report. We're not entitled to see that.
It's the generic, it's the summary, it's like category, it's not individually named.
So, it's essentially the report you provide to RIDE, you're going to provide to us.
Mr. Chairman, so, what it really would end up being would be, it could be by school, the number of incidents that were reported by month, the number that were reported by month that were deemed to be bullying. Because as Ms. Rapore said, you know, that not every bullying report is an actual, is actually bullying. There are some that are not. That's when the administrator and the administrator's team, they investigate and they make the determination. So, I could provide the number, and then the number that actually were, in fact, after investigating bullying, that's what I can report out to the committee. So, you have a number. But as Ms. Rapore said, it's really an educational record. And we can't, we can't share an educational record, the specifics of the educational record with them.
But you can share a summary of it. I'm okay with that.
Chairman, this whole discussion continues to show that we really don't know what we are voting for. And I find that troubling. I mean, I'm far a bullying report, but I have no idea what this is for.
That is why I wanted to kill this motion. And then there were some committee members who I think we can vote on this. School committee receiving all bullying reports. If we kill it and send it to policy, we'd have a much better understanding as to what we'd approve.
All I was trying to do was basically indicate we need to comply with our own policy as it exists. That's all I was trying to do.
That's not what this says.
Fine, then, then I haven't voted. So, my vote under the, under the current description, my vote is still no.
Mrs. Costa?
Well, I guess I was just talking about Mr. Leclerc, and I guess I can rescind this one and have the policy, like you said, go through it, and yep, go through the subcommittee policy, and then report back to us. And we can go from there and see the summaries from there.
They're voting no.
Don't know.
All right, Ms. Leclerc?
No.
Okay, the motion is defeated, four to one. Fine, that's exactly where we should go.
No discussion. We're going to take this and move it to the policy subcommittee?
We're going to do right now. There's no vote, but we still, we still can send, we still can send it to the policy subcommittee. So, we'll discuss the amendments to the bullying policy and establishing a bullying committee, which is the discussion, and as part of that discussion, all the discussion that we've had on bullying issues, we will send to the policy subcommittee for reviewing and amending, proposing an amendment to the bullying policy.
Thanks.
Are you happy, Mrs. Capiscus? Mr. Chair Burke?
We got to be honest.
No, it's good.
If you look at our last policy on the animal policy, you can tell that this committee doesn't dog it.
All right, so this is going to be by the 17th, right? We should have, we should have a policy. Hopefully sooner than that.
A policy?
I mean, let me, can I, Mr. Chair? That might be a little optimistic. I think this is, this is going to take some time, especially since I want to include members of the school community. I mean, I'm not saying that we're looking for, you know, January, but I think we're going to need a little bit of time to go through this. And I, I don't want to commit the first meeting in November because, the only meeting in November. You know, maybe by December. I just, I want to make sure that when we create this policy, we don't rush it. Because there are, it sounds like there are a lot of moving pieces to this, to this policy, which are critical. But that's just, you know, that's my opinion. I don't know what others think.
That'd be much appreciated.
Policy committee, subcommittee can determine how you want to set up a bullying committee as part of the policy committee. But we'll see.
Yes. I'll send you an email with the follow-up of all the information, but yeah. Because I just wanted to become more aware and let parents know because I had a couple of parents that wanted to come, but they were like, all they, alls they did last time was move the bullying policy to the front page of the school committee. What is that, I meant to the school, whatever it is, school page. But like, what is that really doing? What awareness is that really bringing? It's not bringing any kind of awareness. So, I just feel like bullying is a very big issue that needs to be brought more forward and have more awareness than what it does now.
I just ask one more question of clarification.
Of course.
The statewide bullying policy that we were presented, it's effective June 30th, 2012. You mean, RIDE has not addressed this since 2012? Is that correct?
They haven't updated it.
This has been the policy for the last... This has been the policy for the last nine years.
Pick them right.
Really is. And that's why I said I wanted to be more aware, because look, it hasn't been addressed since 2012 with the RIDE, not, let alone us, and we can make changes to it as long as we adhere to this policy, and we can still either add or take stuff, we can't take anything away from it, but we can add stuff to it for our district.
Or for reports that are much more timely and much more often.
Yes.
More often. Any other comments?
Hasn't been updated.
Any other comments? Right, so that's all we'll do.
Okay, thank you.
Next, I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight fifty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Costa, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capiscus?
Oh, no, yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiscus, you can turn the light.